Yeah, I like working in the notes.
Mm-hmm.
Especially.
I will. My goal is to make your life easy, Becky.
Well, I've tried doing them together before.
No, I know.
Forces resignation and stuff.
You ready for rolling?
I'm rolling.
Good evening. This is the continuation of the annual organizational meeting of the Town of Newry Main Planning Board. The regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board will follow immediately after the annual meeting, so please be patient. The board's annual meeting was initially held on July 2nd of 2025, but subsequently tabled due to a vacancy on the board. For the planning board bylaws amended June 18th, 2024, the annual organizational meeting will be held during the first regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board in July. The primary purpose of the annual meeting is the election of a chairperson, the vice chairperson, and secretary. The planning board consists of three members, excuse me, three full members and two alternate members. The current membership roster is, under members, we have Heidi Marata with an expiration of 2026, Ted Baker with an expiration of 2027, and John Gooch-Gauthier with an expiration of 2028. The board also has two alternates, Meredith Herrup and Rod Gates. Their term expires on 2026. Alternates have a one-year appointment. And I'll take this time to welcome our newest full-time member to the board, Heidi Marata, who is taking over the term that Bruce Pierce vacated back in July. Welcome, Heidi.
Thank you.
Before starting the process of electing officers, I would like to engage in an open discussion amongst the board about the properness of a member voting for themselves. We have a three-member board. It is conceivable that somebody has to break a tie. And that would probably be the person that is not in need. So, Mer- Meredith, what are your thoughts on whether it's proper or improper, conflict of interest, not a conflict of interest, for somebody to vote for themselves in the election of officers?
I don't think you can vote for yourself.
Rob?
Yeah, I don't think there's enough to. First of all, having a tie means what? It's undecided.
The world comes to an end.
And normally in most elections in the country, you can vote for yourself if you're unvalued.
If you actually want the position.
Heidi?
I've served on previous boards before for school committee, and we've always had the opportunity to vote for yourself.
Gooch? Well, seems as though if you believe in yourself, you ought to be able to vote for yourself. All right, well, there seems to be consensus here. So with that said, we don't need to go down that rabbit hole any longer. We'll pull ourselves out and move on. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for a chairperson of the board.
Oh, I nominate Ted Baker to be chairperson.
I'll second that.
Okay. A nomination with a proper second nominating Bruce Truly to continue on as chairperson has been made. Any discussion from amongst? Do you want the job? I will.
Yes, I will accept the nomination.
All right, let's go, let's have our, let's take a vote, please.
Yes, in favor.
I guess I'm too.
Ted Baker has been duly elected.
I did not vote.
You did not vote for yourself?
I did not vote.
Seeing that you have two votes, it carries. I do not have to create a conflict of interest with anybody for voting by myself, but I probably would have. All right, I will now take nominations for the position of vice chair and a separate nomination for the position of secretary. I will nominate Gooch to be the vice chair of the board, and I'll also nominate Heidi to be the secretary.
I'll second Heidi.
And I'll second Gooch.
Okay. We have a nomination for two positions, vice chair and a separate position as secretary. The nomination for vice chair was John Gauthier, Gooch, and the nomination for secretary was Heidi. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Here are no discussion. I will take a vote. I vote in favor of the two nominations.
Let's see, I probably ought to vote in favor of her nomination. You vote for yourself too? You are. Okay, I'll vote for myself.
Okay. All right.
I'll vote in favor of both nominations.
Okay. Let the record show that John Gauthier, known as Gooch, has been unanimously voted in as vice chair, and Heidi Marata has been voted in.
Can I say your name briefly?
That's Marata.
Marata, okay. That A at the end confuses me with my Spanish background, so forgive me. Has been unanimously voted in as secretary. This completes the annual organizational meeting of the planning board. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we approve the minutes from the other meeting?
The other annual meeting?
Will you let it?
Because it says draft.
That was a question.
But if this is a continuation, but then just.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna handle both those meetings, those minutes in the, in the regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
We'll get there.
All right, fine.
As I was saying, I'll take a motion. I'll take a, I set the motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second that, then.
Okay, now, oh.
Are you seconding it or are you making?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay. A motion with a proper second to adjourn the annual organizational meeting of the planning board has been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. We will proceed directly to the regular meeting. Good evening. This is the August 6th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Newry Main Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker, and I am the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding, and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberation unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or if you would like to have access to any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded by our recording secretary. If you would like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town's administrator. In addition, tonight's meeting is being televised and/or recorded by Western Hill Access Television. Welcome viewers. If you are physically in attendance, please sign in at this time unless you have already done so. Thank you for signing in.
Yes, everyone has signed in.
This is a working session of the planning board. Maine's Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as chairperson, I may allow exceptions when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow in the butter to address the board. By the Newry's planning board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by 30-minute increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each 30-minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussion will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business: Correspondence received since the last meeting. And old business, we have the Southridge Bicycle Park, Sunday River Skiway Corporation, map and lots, number R13-034 and R12-026. Prior to attending the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures, first of which is attendance. Per Section 2B of the Newry Planning Board Ordinance amended June 8th, 2021, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I first must establish that a forum is present. The forum consists of two voting members. The members of the board are Ted Baker, Chair, John Gooch-Gauthier, Vice Chair, Heidi Marata, Secretary. We also, all three of us are present, so we have a quorum. And we also have our two alternates present, Meredith Herrup and Rod Gates. Having ascertained that a quorum exists, I will now move on to reviewing voting eligibility. By my notes, I am eligible to vote this meeting. Gooch, you are eligible to vote this meeting. Meredith, you are eligible to vote. Rob, you are eligible to vote. Heidi, you were not here at the previous meeting. The board's procedure for that is that if you have dedicated yourself to watching or listening to the recording of the previous meeting, read and familiarize yourself with the draft minutes and any other material that was discussed, and then fill out an affidavit that is notified by Becky, you would then be eligible to vote.
I have not.
You have not. So while we, you will not be eligible to vote tonight. Okay. So, we have reviewed voting eligibility. Becky, you have any questions? Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Let's move on to minutes of the.
Well, actually, I mean, I do have a question.
You do have a question? Is it proper now or is it for something later?
About the voting. Because you said that both alternates are eligible to vote.
They are eligible to vote in that they were here at the previous meeting.
Okay.
They have not been appointed.
Right, so they haven't been elevated to.
They have not been elevated. Let's move on to minutes of the prior meeting. First of all, we have the minutes of the, I believe we have the minutes of the annual organizational meeting that was held and subsequently tabled on July 2nd, 2025. Gooch, you have any, let's see, Rob, you were elevated to that meeting. Do you have any comments on the annual meeting minutes?
I do not.
Gooch?
Nope.
Hearing no edits or corrections to the minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the annual meeting.
Rob, you're eligible to vote for this. You were part of that, you were a member of that meeting.
Okay, I second the motion.
Okay. Motion with a second to approve the minutes of the annual meeting held on July 2nd, which was subsequently tabled, has been made. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote. One, two, three. Let the record show that the minutes of the annual meeting held on Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025 was approved. Next, we have the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting. And again, Rob, since you were elevated for that, you are eligible to vote on approving these minutes. Do we have any, has anybody got any edits, corrections, or questions on those minutes?
I didn't see it. I didn't see any.
You didn't see it?
Oh, I, no, I saw, I saw.
Oh, you didn't see the edits or corrections, okay.
I didn't have, no, no corrections.
Okay, all right. Rob?
No.
Hearing that we have no edits, corrections, or other questions on the minutes of the Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025 regular meeting, I will take a vote, come on approving them.
I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. A motion with a proper second to approve the, the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting on July 2nd has been made. Any last-minute discussions? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. One, two, three. Let the record show that the minutes of the regularly scheduled board meeting for Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025 were approved as written. Let's move on to correspondence received. The first correspondence is a memorandum from the chair of the Newry Planning Board to the Newry Town Administrator dated July 31st, 2025. The subject of the memorandum is a request for legal assistance. There are two references made on the memorandum, the first being Reference A, which is the Newry Board of Appeals Notice of Decision and Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law dated July 30th, 2025. Reference B is the Newry Planning Board Application Number 25-286 Timberline TH LLC Application for a Major Subdivision. Paragraph 1, Reference A is the decision of the Newry Board of Appeals to remand Reference B back to the planning board for further review. Reference A also includes additional instructions to the planning board. Paragraph 2, given the complexities incorporated in Reference A, the planning board is requesting legal assistance to interpret the remand instructions. This assistance will help the planning board chart its course on how to proceed with its review.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Did you want copies of that out to everybody?
I have not.
Okay.
Oh, no wonder I can't.
Okay, I'm reading this going, paragraph 2. Thanks, sir.
And as I was reading, this assistance needs to be, take place with the entire board in attendance. Paragraph 3, the planning board's initial review of Reference A is scheduled to take place at the planning board regularly scheduled meeting on August 20th, 2025. Getting the assistance scheduled during the meeting would be ideal. Paragraph 4, if appropriate, I also request that this assistance be conducted in an executive session. Respectfully submitted, Edward Baker, Chair, Newry Planning Board. If anybody wants a hard copy.
Sure, I'll, I'll look.
Anybody else want a copy?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we have a copy. Okay, I'll make copies.
Yes, please.
And we'll hold until we get second piece of correspondence because that's Joel's.
Ted, would that be a Zoom meeting?
Depends. Depends on, right now, the town, the town attorney is not available because they are representing the Board of Appeals. So the town is searching for a third legal counsel that will be independent.
A third?
A separate, a separate lawyer, a separate legal office.
Okay, okay, I didn't know we had two of the parolees.
Well, the legal, the Perkins, Perkins Thompson, who is the legal attorney for the town, is, has a conflict because they are representing and working with the Board of Appeals, so they cannot, they cannot work with us.
So we have to get a separate law.
So we have to get a separate law firm to, to provide counsel to the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I.
So at this point in time, I should recuse myself from this discussion?
No, because we are not discussing the application. We are discussing the decision, findings of fact, and conclusion of law made by the Board of Appeals. We are not discussing the application. However, if you are comfortable recusing yourself, more comfortable, that is.
I don't want there to be a conflict of interest, so that's why I'm.
I, I.
Wondering what this part of this, of the meeting is about.
Okay. This part of the meeting is, and I am sharing the correspondence that, that I, as chair, sent to the town administrator requesting legal, independent legal counsel for the planning board to review the decision that was put out by the Board of Appeals. And while I will open the floor to discussion if other board members feel that there is a conflict of interest here, my position is that there is not because we are not discussing the application. We are discussing the decision made by the Board of Appeals. If we get into the nitty-gritty of the application, which is not my intent, then there's a whole can of worms that is going to open up on that. Does that satisfy you at all?
Not really, because I'm still confused. It sounds like you're trying to hire another lawyer because you want to discuss the outcome of the appeals board's lawyer or the guidance that was determined at that meeting.
That is partially correct. The, the remand, the decision from the Board of Appeals provided several instructions for the planning board to carry out. Those instructions are complex and twisted legally. And for the, in my opinion, for the planning board to be able to execute and proceed with the instructions from the Board of Appeals, remanding that application, it needs, the board would benefit from having legal counsel explain, explaining what needs to be done, what can be done, what cannot be done, where it stands, et cetera. Any questions from?
I have no questions. Having been in contact with both the applicant's attorney and the town attorney that represented the zoning board of appeals, they're, they're both recommending that the planning board have an attorney to make sure that they're following procedures correctly for the remand. I, I can't, we don't have any records of any remand ever in this town, so this is going to be something that's new. And unfortunately, Perkins Thompson's, the town's legal counsel, can't represent the planning board because they've already represented the Board of Appeals. So I've reached out to a different firm. It's just the, from what I understand, they're not going to tell them what to do or how to do it, but what they're legally, is it a de novo? Is it new application coming in, new, new submissions? They're going to advise the chair for that, for that review legally, on what they can do.
The board.
The board, sorry, the board, correct, the whole board, yeah.
So, can I just ask another question?
Sure.
So it sounds like two, like once, once this gets remanded back to the board, it would be Gooch, Meredith, and Rob voting and reviewing, right? Because.
That, that is, that is part of the instructions from the remand to be clarified. Potentially, you are correct.
Yeah. And obviously, Heidi hasn't been appointed yet, so that's not included in any of the remand, remand language.
Right, but she would need to step down for.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah.
And then from sitting in on those appeals meetings, it sounded like.
Everyone has a copy of the remand already.
Yeah.
Before the actual review of the application, yes.
So, please, correct.
That we are, we are getting ahead of ourselves, if that is correct.
Right. So, the attorney is there to guide the board.
Rob, any, you have, you have any questions? You need any, you have any comments?
Nope. All we can have last per pledge from Joel is any documented or hard copy would be useful for me. So I can.
Yes, you want a, you want a paper copy of the remand? Okay.
And anything else? I mean, it sounds like it's really just going to go back to the language of the year, right?
This, we're getting.
Yeah, we are.
Anything else that might be useful.
That is, that is, that would be a perfect question at a, at a future meeting. Heidi?
The only other question I have is, it says, if appropriate, I request that assistance be conducted in executive session, so I wanted to know why we were going, you were going into executive session.
Because the, the communications between counsel and client are private. And if it goes into executive session, since I have to be refused, or have been refused, and you will recuse yourself.
Correct.
You and I will not be part of that executive session. If it does, if the counsel says, no, this does not meet the standards for an executive session, then the discussion will be held at regular meeting. In which case, you and I will both be eligible to partake. Because again, we are discussing the decision from the planning board. We are not discussing the application 25-286.
So the remand instructions are this one?
No.
No? Okay, good.
No, this is new business later on.
Okay.
Okay. There, if you have not received it, the, the decision, findings of fact, conclusions of law from the appeal filed by Timberline TH LLC on application 25-286 for a major subdivision is available for distribution. Please, if you do not have one, see the enforcement officer, somebody else in the house staff.
I did email that. Everybody has a copy.
Yes.
Ironically, honestly. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you would have gotten this on your computer.
This is on my computer.
It's in your email.
Okay.
And, and Joel does have your mailing address, and she'd be happy to mail you a copy or give you a, give you one in person.
I can go make those, um.
Just hang on.
Okay.
If we can get that later.
So I have one question.
Yes.
So you'll be asking the attorney if an executive session is appropriate or not?
The town will be soliciting, when an attorney has been identified, one of the first questions will be whether or not an executive session is proper or not. And we will have that answered by the next meeting. Okay. Last chance.
Do I want to discuss my correspondence?
Yes, well, I'm last chance first.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
All right. That was some good discussions, some good questions. Again, if anybody has, comes up with more questions, please, we can always go back and revisit. revisit it. We have a second piece of correspondence, which is an email stream from the code enforcement officer, and I will allow her to relay that to us.
Okay. I'm just going to read it out loud for the record, so it's on tape. This isn't, I'll put these on so I can see better. This is an email exchange the day after the zoning board of appeals met. And it is to Rick at Mainland, John Barata, part of the LLC that is Timberline TH LLC, and the town administrator. And I wrote, "Hello, gentlemen. With the Board of Appeals' vote last night and the U D R O requiring two weeks' submission for all new materials, the B O A remand of Timberline TH LLC application will be on the August 20th planning board agenda. Rick, this will give you more time to get any new or updated changes sent to us for the application. The planning board will receive the remand on August 20th. If you would submit a letter." I'm sorry. I love how emails print. "Rick's response, including all of those players, to help that date, is that date locked in or going to be pushed to the following meeting if needed? Not sure if a two-week timeframe will be adequate to resubmit all materials." I wrote back to Rick, and then CC'd everyone in the chain. "The planning board will receive the remand on August 20th. If you would submit a letter stating you acknowledge the planning board that has received the remand and will need more time to submit materials, that would be great. I will double-check the order, but I believe the planning board has 30 days to read from receipt to get a new review completed. I will be in touch." At that point, I had phone calls from Paul Derrick Grispo, from N H D attorneys representing the applicant, and then I had a call from Jim Katsapikas, the town's attorney. And then, so I wrote them in to the reply to John, Rick, and the town administrator. And I wrote, "Hello, all. Paul and Jim have called me, and I understand there is no timeline for the remand review to be heard in front of the planning board and the U D R O. This is not a new application before the planning board. So as suggested by the attorneys, there will be a workshop meeting with the planning board with open discussions with the applicant and engineer. It is a public meeting, but the public is only allowed to speak when the Chair allows. Rick, do you think you could have rough drafts of any new proposed plans by September 3rd? And we can schedule the workshop for the 20th. If that doesn't work, let me know, and we'll schedule accordingly. Thank you, and I'll send you to law." Just to let, this is, it'll be a workshop meeting when we receive the remand officially. I need to talk to you about that.
Turn it sideways.
Yeah. I, I don't know what's going on with our new system.
Any questions, discussions on that email stream?
Nope.
Okay.
Let's move on to old business. The matter is Southridge Bicycle Park, Sunday River Steeway Corporation, map and lots, number R 13, line 034, and number lot R 12026, application 25-288. Before we proceed with the review, the Chair needs to discuss the high bar set by the Board of Appeals in regards to conflict of interest from their recent decision. The Board of Appeals has set a very high bar, and it has been corroborated by the town council as to a conflict of interest, as well as the appearance of conflict of interest. Previously to, or prior to the Board of Appeals' decision, members of the board would go through a two-part test for pecuniary conflict of interest. The first test was stating that, in my case, that I was an employee of Sunday River. The second test stating that I own significantly less than 10% of Sunday River Steeway Corporation or its parent company, Boing. However, 30-A MSR, section 2605, subparagraph four, deals with direct and indirect pecuniary conflict of interest. Is everybody familiar with the word pecuniary?
No.
Financial.
Ah.
We are talking about financial conflicts of interest. That, the cited statute sets up a two-part test. First part is the board member, an officer, director, partner, associate, employee, or stockholder of a private corporation, business, or other economic entity before the board or an interested party. The second part of that test is the board member directly or indirectly the owner of at least 10% of the stock of the private corporation, or owns at least 10% interest in the business or other economic entity. As I had just stated previously to the Board of Appeals' recent decision, I, the Chair, satisfied the first question by stating, for the record, that I am an employee of Sunday River, but by my hourly position as a shuttle driver, was far, far away from being able to, or subject to influences from Sunday River's senior management. Subsequent to the Board of Appeals' decision and the strict interpretation that a conflict of interest also includes the perception of a conflict, my disclosure of employment no longer holds water. I therefore must recuse myself from any further participation in the review of application 25-288, Sunday River Bike Park Trails, because I am an employee of Sunday River. I will resume the Chair after the application is complete.
Oh, my.
As the record shows, that the Chair has refused himself from reviewing application 25-286, because they are, he is an employee of Sunday River and either has a direct conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest.
I guess that face the Chairman.
Certainly does.
Okay. Excuse me, Gus, let me at least pass to you the checkoff sheet.
Where we, where we stood on this, you will need that. I don't know as I can find, Brian. Wonderful place to start. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I am also a team member of Sunday River, and so I will recuse myself.
Okay. Yeah, you are, aren't you?
I am.
Rob.
They're dropping like flies.
Uh, and Heidi, you recuse yourself?
No.
Well, I am a seasonal employee, however, at this point in time, I am not an employee of Sunday River.
Well, Ted's a seasonal employee.
I am, I am currently an employee. I'm still at, on the register as an employee.
I am not.
You are not. Can we ask you for advice?
No.
Unfortunately, because this is a continuing application, Heidi is not eligible to vote because she has not, was not here for the prior meeting.
Correct.
So we have a majority of two, Rob and I. Right? Correct?
Mm-hmm. So this is a quorum?
Yep, which is a quorum.
Soon you're elevating me.
What?
I assume you're elevating me, since I'm an alternate.
Absolutely. Your hair will start to grow back in a minute.
I just have one, one water. Do I need to step away from the table, or I'm just not voting or discussing the topic?
Historically, we've just been not discussing.
Right. Okay.
It's not even not discussing. Unless there's objections.
No objection. Is there any comfortable?
Give me a, give me a break, something to do with this now.
I think you have to make a motion to elevate him.
I think you're right.
And I think Heidi can second that.
Oh, she's not voting. I'm elevating him.
How does he, does he just second his own elevation?
So as far as elevation goes, I would think that that's not a conflict of interest, and that I could vote on that, because that's so procedural.
I would agree.
So I could nominate Rob Cates to stand as a member to vote.
A full member, yeah.
Okay, so she's nominating him, I can second that. Okay, and should we wait for him to come back so he can vote for himself?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. This is the most complicated planning board meeting I have ever been to, and I've been to about a thousand of them.
Better to do it right.
I was thinking that I have never been to a reprimand meeting.
Reprimand?
Remand.
Remand meeting, okay. Sounds like reprimand.
I'm an employee under two, but I'm still going to take the minutes.
That'd be good. Where is that computer? I'll go right, plug it in, because in order for it to back up on carbonite at night, we have to go out there and plug it in. I'll bring it out.
Why are you regarding?
I nominated you.
To be a prison, or whatever a correct term is. And I was thinking of it. And now we get to vote on it.
Yes.
I can't vote on that, I've elevated it yet.
Sure you can.
No, I'm not elevating it.
Right.
I'm elevating it.
Okay, I'll, I'll vote for it too. So that makes two of us. That's a majority, and so you're, you're, you're risen. Why am I having trouble with words tonight? I'm Pete. How are you?
Good.
We're, uh, you have submitted a new. Completed application, I assume.
Yeah, so Peter Roberts, representing Sunday River Ski Resort, and to add another layer of confusion to the meeting, at the first meeting, I came in with the wrong application fee, because there were some new fees that went into effect in June. I don't think that I gave you the check for the incorrect amount. And then I realized when I got here that I didn't have either of the checks for the original or new amount, and so my request is that the board would proceed with reviewing the application, and I will return.
So you haven't brought the checks tonight now?
No.
We decided that there's no escrow, and so let's.
There was a $250 initial review fee that went into effect not too long ago that I missed. I do have the checks for the initial review and site review fees. So my request to the board is to review the application. No approvals would be granted, and then I can return at the August 20th meeting to wrap things up and make sure that the fees are paid correctly.
Rob's reading. You're asking questions.
Well, I know I can't vote. However, being reasonable, I would think that you can still proceed with the meeting, because to me, this is a checklist, and it's not necessarily, I mean, are you doing it in exact order, or can you waive? That you would give the check and then.
We did it last time, too, so there's no problem.
Okay.
Because we can't sign the thing.
I was going to go through this document and see whether each section was complete, and get those check marks offline, and go from there. And I've read this before on my computer, and I hope it was complete, but I'll read it again.
So, John, it's okay that they don't pay tonight?
Is it okay with you?
I don't get a vote.
You don't get a vote. Um.
We've done this in the past.
We have done this in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah. Worth, worth, I would vote, we just don't finish signing the final thing until.
Yeah, we don't get to sign anything tonight. When we get the money, we'll sign this thing. How's that sound?
Assuming it's all approved.
Yeah, my request is just that we proceed with review, understanding that there wouldn't be any sort of approval until the fees paid.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you.
We're here, you're here.
I should have just gone.
We're confused enough as it is, let's keep going.
Gus, this is a shortcut. Since we did have the previous application complete, can we just ask what's different? And only worry about.
Um.
I know this is not.
According to Ted's, Ted's review tracking, he did not check off that anything was complete.
Okay, I'm gonna do that to find out it's complete.
Yeah, Rob, from what I remember, the application was not deemed complete.
So Heidi, just a question?
Yes.
Heidi's brand new. Why don't we start right off with 10.1 on your checklist and look at that and vote whether or not that's complete?
Well, I thought that was what we were doing.
Yeah, that's what I was about to.
Oh, okay.
Um, Rob, any thoughts on 10.1?
I made a motion that it is complete, 10.1.
I'll second that motion, and let's go on to the section 10.1 is complete.
One.
Two. Got a check mark there. Okay, 10.2. Do we have a date received?
In fact, you know, it says it's tonight's meeting.
It's tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Oh, no, we're using the old application number, I'm sorry.
Right, so it would have been July 7th.
I have, because I, I received this different than that comparison. Yes, it was first reviewed, but it's July 7th.
July 7th.
Okay, 10.2, item number 10. I think we reviewed last time through. I think we reviewed last time, it did not require the Sunday River to review the package.
I remember that.
2 for that.
So in the narrative for 10.2, you reference where it was due to be found on the registry. Actually, I think it's in 10.1, but the Oxford Registry deeds has all that stuff online, so if the board's number one, so look it up. And then if anything, you'd see it brought in and have copies of it in the other one.
Did you manage to get the Oxford registry check on PDFs from the district controlling zone?
It's a struggle. One person has good software, she is.
I have a question about the list of the butters.
Yep.
How old is that list?
That was the same list that was presented last time.
Okay, because there's a couple of arrows. I noted, when we get to that third section here. Boulder Construction LLC, PO Box 44 East Greenwich Main?
Yeah, we talked about that, and I thought that was incorrect on the town's tax database, but...
Well, it might have existed when you pulled the list, it doesn't exist anymore on that.
So it was...
So I don't know which map and lot that's associated with because it's not listed here.
Okay.
And there was another one that Heidi found. 48 Greenbrier LLC?
No, it's JAM Realty Trust, RT. It's the one that says Blueberry Road. I think it's on there. I'm looking. It's on the...
I got it, yeah, 13th.
Yep.
The JAM Realty Trust, I don't know how old that is either. I just didn't know how long ago you pulled the list from our website.
I believe it was early June.
Okay.
But I could be mistaken. So I guess I'll take direction from the board on these, if the board's looking for us to...
Well, since we have one of the butters in the room that didn't get a notification, I guess I'll ask her.
Or notify her, it's okay. I just don't know if other people on this list, you know, if you're saying you pulled it from the tax records.
So tax records, the way they work for our town, we have a magic date of April 1, and so properties are bought and sold and they don't get updated on the website, unfortunately. We do take this as a good faith list. They did what they could. One of these is quite old, so that's why I was asking when you pulled it, because the Boulder one is like a couple of years, that seems a couple of years old.
Um, yeah.
But doesn't mean that there's not an error at the, at the, our assessing office either.
Yeah, and I guess if we made a mistake, I'd be happy to fix that in whatever way the board wishes.
Well, I don't think that we can, I'm, I'm okay with mine.
Right.
Not being correct, but I can't speak for the other people in the list, so...
Since I've received no correspondence, no emails, no phone calls questioning anything about this application, I'm gonna say it's probably not an issue, but that's just my opinion.
I would say though, if these were sent as certified mail according to the letter, then that you would have gotten them back. So that's what I'm questioning, you know, how many other people?
Oh, that's not necessarily true.
Really?
You would think if it's certified mail.
We go, even with our tax bills, and I'll speak out of turn just for some general information, even the town's tax bills will take eight to nine weeks to get back to us as undelivered from USPS.
Oh my.
In our, in our old certified mail, when, like for foreclosures, won't come back to us for eight or nine weeks. And they're supposed to have a three-week turnaround to get these delivered to the folks we mail these letters to. It is, it, it is super frustrating for the town right now. So just throwing that out there, USPS has been frustrating to deal with.
Do you, do you have tracking records for this?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know that the assessing office or the tax office does that, or I'm assuming they do. They all come with, those are great big law members.
Yeah, as soon as you can get track on the website.
But it's beyond the scope of what's required by law for foreclosure, so I'm not sure what they've done. I'm just letting the board know that the USPS can be very slack.
Well, two months is a long time to keep an applicant sitting on a string waiting for something to come back.
Agreed.
And I'm assuming that if the applicant sent it correctly, it ought to be good enough.
Well, I think the only question is whether the list is adequate, right, because it is...
I have spot checked some of these, just random, because I don't know half of these people. And I have found everything else to be adequate. It's only because I know Boulder Construction, because they pulled the term under Boulder Construction for that, for that address that I'm assuming it went to. It's like, mm, I don't think that hasn't been there for a long time. So that's the only thing that caught my eye right away.
Well, it was good for the first of April.
Right.
But if it was sold the second of April, and then it has to go through the registry of deeds before it finally gets back here...
And we don't update our records until the fall of June because of tax purposes. They owned it on June 1, they get the tax bill.
We provided him this list.
There you go.
It ought to be good enough. He has, he doesn't have a better list, and we don't have a better list, so it ought to be good enough.
Is this from UDR, because it says it's based on tax?
That's right, that's right.
So that, that's, that's good faith.
Mm-hmm, it is good faith.
Yeah, it's good faith.
That's the, that's the word. Okay, thank you for listening.
So I'll make a motion that section 10.2 is complete.
Give me another 38 seconds, and I'll see what I can do. Look at that. Rob, you made a motion that section 10.2 is complete. I'll second that motion. Uh, let's have a vote on whether section 10.2 is complete.
One.
Two, done. Okay, section 10.3, let's take a look at.
Thoughts? From a completion perspective, I think 10.3 is complete.
I think you're right.
I'll make a motion that section 10.3 is complete.
I'll second that. I'm gonna vote on it.
One.
Two. Okay, section 10.3 is complete. Let's look at 10.4. Peter, make your stormwater management plan.
That was just a narrative that was written in the 10.4 and number six.
It's what, what?
I said, um, 10.4 and number six, just a short paragraph, it was a narrative.
Okay, so it's in here in the letters list?
It's right after 10.4, so 38, in the packet.
So basically they're saying that the ski trail's already got existing drainage figured out, for lack of a better term, and this won't really affect it.
I don't anticipate that this would create, I guess, a measurable change. And that, I guess, is to the planning board to determine if that's adequate for a stormwater management plan.
There's an inconsistency with items 2A, 2B, 2C, third page in tab number 10.4. Says a copy of the letter is sent to the Newry Fire Chief, and then this one to the Road Commissioner. And then it says Newry Fire Chief again, under 2C. This is a typo, I'm sure, just carrying it through.
Huh, okay.
Oh, to the Oxfordshire.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
So on your maps, Peter, you show pre-existing mountain bike trails. Are these going to be utilized with the ones you have developing? Or are these abandoned or still being used?
Um, so they were existing trails that were built between 1988 and 2016 or so. Joel and I dug through the records and couldn't find any planning board approval for any of them. They were formally abandoned by Sunday River, I believe, in 2018. Local people still go ride them and rake them, and they're still...
So they're just on here showing that that's where they were?
I think with minimal effort, we could get them back to being a viable part of the mountain bike offering. And so they're shown on there as existing trails, which are not permitted and not marketed as amenity for the resort, but something we would like to restore and bring back.
So is that, that's not in this phase, and what's gonna happen?
The phasing plan that's attached to 10.4, there's a memo that I wrote, and that talks about... that talks about, um, restoration of existing trails as part of one of the phases, um, that we're proposing.
Okay. Yep, now I remember.
So the restoration will take place in the different phases that you've got colored?
Um, I think in the memo, I suggested that, um, restoration of existing trails would be considered part of Phase 1.
Okay.
So Phase 1 would be new construction just in the South Ridge sharelift area and then also restoration of all existing trails.
Thoughts, Rob?
Uh, are you comfortable with what's been provided for seven?
For seven?
Erosion and sedimentation control. That's enough for evaluation.
Well, it appears it's on page one, not page two.
Ah. So we got it, so good.
Peter, your... I have number seven, Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan.
Is that sheet number?
Sheet two. Um, there's really nothing for a description of that.
Um, okay, so I believe that's sheet four, there's a written, a written control procedure...
Isn't that what sheet one is? Sheet one...
It's the very last sheet.
Oh, very last.
It's the very last sheet.
Ah, so it's on page two either, page four.
So over the course of a couple of applications, two or three years ago, um, we kind of vetted this erosion, sedimentation control plan out with the town's engineering consultant. Um, that's been unchanged since those applications. And then, uh, maybe he has typically required a copy of their housekeeping standards to also be on the plans and so that's just copy and paste it out of the DEP rules next to that, um, Erosion Control narrative.
The main DEP check for 500?
Yeah, and so I will fix the reference and I have number seven to the correct drawing sheet.
Looks like we have a waiver for the performance standards. Is that the only waiver we're looking for here?
Um, there were two waivers that we requested. One was for the, uh, performance guarantee. Um, and then the other one was, uh, we requested a reduced list of the butters, um, just based on the warning of the DRO, that we have to notify everyone within a thousand, it's a thousand feet of partial boundary, right? Or parcels together, if they're almost evaluated or anything.
Even then, I would just put the waiver from four.
Okay.
Just my question, one question. Um, so if the mountain, if the bike park's gonna be used and it says winter stabilization measures, it says September 1st seeding slopes and seeding grass areas on September 15th, does the park shut down and then they're gonna seed all of the places that are like in the woods?
No, that would be, um, for new trail construction.
Okay, so not on the trails, but just around where you're doing construction?
True.
For the erosion control.
Yeah, and the intent is to get things seeded early enough so that you generate before frost hits and kind of gives you a road.
You made a motion that 10.4 is complete.
I have a motion, yeah, at this.
Oh, you have a big motion, okay.
At this proposition, yeah.
Proposition, okay. Um... Item seven says, see drawing two, that's actually four, is that enough to accept the applicant?
It's still there, right?
Right, it's complete.
It's what? Still there.
It's still there.
Yeah, so unless you want to go back and do it again.
Over here, there's a nodding of heads, so I guess life was...
It's worth that.
Well, Gutcher, in my experience, um, the board can deem the application complete and then ask for additional information or edits.
Okay.
So the question is, does it work down to, down to...
I don't think so. That's my opinion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, 10.4 is complete.
Okay, and I'll second that and we'll vote on it.
One.
Two. Okay, 10.4 is at a checkpoint. Okay. The date that the application is found complete is, uh, six?
The sixth, on the sixth.
This is a comment, what we can do is request that everything be updated properly, completely before it's all signed off, since we're coming back to that anyway. So probably, I don't know if we want to make it a formal condition of approval, but just a condition.
Yes.
I think verbally, when we decide to break the session, I'll give you a list of typos and errors that I can bring back as a amended application or revised application.
So you had two waivers, but neither one of them were, were, were performance standards, is this true?
No, one, I think, one is, one is a performance standard.
Well, there's, uh, performance standards are the design standards we have to meet and then performance guarantee is the one that we...
Okay, so this is a performance standard.
Yeah, so the waiver was for the financial performance guarantee.
Done.
Those voted on at the last meeting, I believe, or isn't that in...
So is this performance standard is going to be waived? Though, would you like it to be waived, I guess, is the question.
Becky, no, Becky is saying that she thinks we've already voted on, that she's lucky.
But, yeah, I agree, both waivers have already been voted on in the previous...
Yes, so the abbreviated list of butters, that's there?
Yeah, the abbreviated list of butters that we were, has been approved and, um, performance guaranteed.
Yep, that was also approved. We've already approved both waivers.
Okay, will a site visit be held for this project?
I think I mentioned that a site visit is not needed.
I'll second that. Remove and second it, that a site visit is not needed, will not be held in this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Uh, will a public hearing be held for this project? Nope. A public hearing is required for all major subdivisions. Per state law, the application must be found complete before public hearing. Per state law, a public hearing must be held within 30 days of the application being found complete. The town office must be notified in time to post public notification as detailed in state law. This is not a major subdivision, so I do not see where we need a public hearing.
We can't request it, though.
We can request it, yes.
But I make a motion that we do not hold a public meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, what did I say?
Meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, public hearing. This is a public meeting right here. Okay, so you made a motion that a public hearing will not be held for this project. And I'll second that. And now we can vote on it.
One.
Two. Oh, let's see. We've already waived the performance guarantee. Are there any conditions of approval being placed upon this application? If yes, each condition must be voted on with a formal motion.
I, I would think you'd have to wait on that until you review the performance standards and the criteria.
Okay. The board proceeds to review all performance standards applicable to this application, which is in the UD era. Okay. Let's see here.
Check of 13.
Yep, that's what I was saying. Give a nice little check.
Historically, the criteria, the conditions of approval, um, talk about once it's complete, if you guys find something you don't really like, you place the conditions of approval on it. That gets moved on prior to the criteria approval. So it could be... How, or could be that needs to be taken more substantial measures right now?
Yeah.
Section 13, Congress.
The general performance standards.
Okay. All right, let's see here. General performance standards. A, performance of comprehensive plan. All proposed developments regulated by those ordinance show being conforming with the comprehensive plan of policy taken to the town. With provisions of all pertinent local ordinances, regulations, state, federal regulations. Let's see, this is in the resort district.
Would a cheat sheet help?
Oh, that'd be a wonderful idea.
There you go.
Um, you've got longer, Robert, you've got cheat sheets? This is two, five, two, eight, eight. And it is...
Most of these don't apply.
What?
Most of these performance standards don't apply.
Yes, I know. The first one does.
Yes, I would say it applies. I don't, I'm looking at these, I don't think any of these are a problem.
I don't think they are either, but I think we have to look at them anyway.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm looking at them.
What?
I'm looking at them, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay. So I guess our choice is complies, does not comply, I'm looking. And the first one complies.
Yep.
And the findings of fact are that this is in the resort district, so...
So which one, I, can you verbalize, like, which, the first, the family scan?
I was looking at A.
13.1A complies.
Uh, is it...
Typically, you read them aloud.
I did.
Okay, okay. I was looking at something else, sorry.
Um, okay, findings of fact. Uh, this is in the resort district, that's the correct term, district? She's not listening to me.
I'm, I'm...
The correct term is this is in the resort district?
It, it is in the resort district, yeah.
Okay, so it is, you can do this in the resort district?
You can?
Yes.
Yeah?
So I think that's all we need to put down there.
Can we lock up? Okay, I'm sorry, I have to go, I have to stay on the emergency.
I'm sorry, too.
You guys know how to lock up.
Oh, let's see, municipal services. The proposed development of, this is 13B, municipal services. Proposed development shall not have an unreasonable adverse impact on the municipal services, including municipal road systems, fire department, police department, solid waste program, schools, recreational programs and facilities, and other municipal services and facilities. When the planning board finds, based on a recommendation of the select board or other departments and the results of any municipal impact analysis that includes future tax payments that will support municipal services, that municipal services do not have the capacity to provide services to the proposed development, the planning board will require one or more of the following. A voluntary payment to the town to mitigate the direct impact to municipal services that has been identified as a con, as a consequence, as the consequence of the proposed subdivision. This is not a subdivision.
Uh, question. So, do we really have to read through this whole thing? Or can you skim it and then say, well, it doesn't have an impact and then it says not applying?
We can do that. Um, I make a motion that thirteen B Municipal Services is not applicable to this project.
Do we actually have to vote on each one? I thought we could just, for the, the, um, for this performance standard, we can just go through them, we don't have to vote on each one? As opposed to criteria?
Well... Let's look at each one, cover our buts, how does that sound? It's longer, but...
You might not have to vote on it, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, we have to go through, we don't have to vote on it.
We can go through and check it all, but then...
We can go through and say, okay, it's not applicable.
Yes.
Yeah, you can just say which ones aren't applicable and then...
I'm saying that thirteen B one is not applicable. Yes. Uh, I make a motion that...
That's okay.
Okay. So, a move and second that B one is not applicable. All the favor, one, two. Good. Preservation and enhancement of landscape. One part of me says it's not applicable, and the other part says this is as minimum of, 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 of development project as we've ever had. But... Thirteen C, preservation enhancement of the landscape. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical by minimizing tree removal, disturbance of soil, retaining existing vegetation during construction. After construction is completed, landscaping shall be implemented that will define, soften, or screen the appearance of off-street parking areas, buildings, and other structures from public right-of-way and abutting properties in order to enhance physical design of the proposed development and to minimize the encroachment of proposed uses of neighboring land uses.
Complies.
Hmm?
Complies.
It complies. Okay. Can you make a motion of that effect?
Sure. On the motion that thirteen C, the application complies.
I'll second that. We'll vote on it. Two. Okay, and the reasons for this are it will be the, a very minimum develop as far as all soil disturbance.
I have a question.
Yes?
So, the plan is to not take down massive amounts of trees in order to build these trails, but to do existing pathways, not under proposed locations?
Um, there are two parts to this. So, one would be rehabbing the existing trails, which would not require any tree clearing. Uh, the second part would be to build new trails, which would require some tree clearing. And I generally would perceive it as being clearing of smaller trees, and usually the trail can be manipulated to go around larger trees.
Uh, D. Relation of proposed buildings to the environment. I make a motion that this is not applicable.
I'll second that.
The move and second is not applicable. One?
Two.
Three. Uh, land not suitable for building. There are no... The following areas shall not be built on excluding road and driveway construction. This property, for lack of a better term, is already developed as a ski trail. There are no buildings going to be built. So, I make a motion that land not suitable for building is not applicable.
I'll second that.
One? Topsoil and vegetation removal. Thirteen F, topsoil and vegetation removal. Topsoil shall be considered part of the development. Topsoil shall be considered part of the development, okay? And shall not be removed from the site except for surplus topsoil from roads, parking areas, building excavations, and otherwise indicated on the approved site plan. Okay. Sufficient residual vegetation shall be left intact to prevent soil erosion following forest practices, landscaping, and cutting of trees to provide access to direct sunlight. The planning board shall require a developer to make measures to correct and prevent soil erosion in the proposed development. Three, to prevent soil erosion on shoreland zone, shoreland areas as defined, timber harvesting and clearing or removal of vegetation for development shall comply with regulations set forth in the shoreland zoning ordinance.
I'll move that, uh, that proposal complies with F.
Is what?
The proposal complies with F.
Okay. Can you make a motion of that effect?
That's what I did.
And I will second it, and we'll vote on it.
One.
Two. And how does this do that? Because...
Because it's not...
It's a minimal amount of...
Vegetation removal.
Vegetation removal. G, erosion and sedimentation control. Following measures relating to conservation, erosion, and sediment control shall be included where applicable as all parts, as all projects submitted for review and approval under this ordinance. All exploration shall be undertaken by contractors certified in erosion and sediment control by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. Two, the Code Enforcement Office shall require the developer or owners to prevent soil erosion and sedimentation transport... Sediment? Transport on the site and onto adjacent and downstream properties. Erosion control pro- practices shall conform to the main erosion and sediment control best management practices, BMP manual for design, nerds, and engineers. Three, erosion of soil and sedimentation of water courses and water volume shall be minimized by employing the following best management practices. A, stripping of vegetation, soil removal, and regrading or other development shall be done in such a ways to minimize erosion. Development shall keep, build, cut, fill operations to a minimum and ensure conformity with topography so as to create the least erosion potential and adequately handle the volume and velocity of surface water runoff. C, where feasible, natural vegetation shall be retained, protected, and supplemented. D, disturbed areas and the duration of exposure shall be kept to a practical minimum. E, disturbed soils shall be stabilized as quickly as practical. F, temporary vegetation or mulching shall be used to protect disturbed areas during development. G, until disturbed areas stabilize, sediment in the runoff water shall be trapped by the use of debris basins, sediment basins, silt traps, or other applicable methods. H, the top of a cut or bottom of a filled section shall not be closer than ten feet to be joining, adjoining property unless otherwise specified by the Code Enforcement Officer. I, during grading operations, methods of dust control shall be employed wherever applicable. J, whatever sedimentation is caused by stripping vegetation, regrading, or other development, it shall be responsibility of the developer causing such sedimentation to remove it from all adjoining surfaces, drainage systems, and water courses, and to repair any damage at its expense as quickly as possible. Is this covered in page four?
That's my question for you, the reasonable of it, but...
Well, let's look at page four again. I think that thirteen G and thirteen H, which I haven't read yet, but I will, are or can be taken at the same time. Thoughts?
I think they're covered.
I think they're covered, too. Let me, just for the record, read H. Thirteen H, storm water management. For projects that require Department of Environmental Protection's review under the Site Location Development Act, which this project does not, a storm water management plan shall be submitted which complies with SLODA permit and the requirements of DEP Chapter 500. For projects that do not require SLODA permit, but require DEP permit under storm water, which this doesn't, storm water management plan shall be submitted which complies with Chapter 500, again. Three, for projects that require, neither require a SLODA permit or a DEP permit under the storm water law, a storm water management plan shall be submitted which incorporates adequate provision for the management of the quantity and quality of all storm water generated within the subdivision, which this is, or any drained groundwater through a management system of swales, culverts, under drains, storm drains, best management practices equivalent to those, the most recent edition of the Storm Water Management Prove BMP S Technical Design Manual published by the DEP Protecto. Where necessary to achieve standards, there shall be provided easements for drainage right-of-ways for swales, culverts, and basins, other means of channeling surface water. The storm... Five, storm drainage system will not adversely affect neighboring properties' downstream water quality or cause soil erosion. Whenever possible, onsite absorption of runoff water shall be utilized or minimized discharges from the site. Six, maintenance of drainage facilities and water courses originating and completely on private property is a safe, is the responsibility of the owner to the point of open discharge at the property line or in a communal water course within the property. It's covered. Okay.
The motion that G and H are in place.
Okay, we want to take this at one fell swoop.
I just have one question. So, in here, it says at the top of their erosion control on page four, it says that this was taken from the October 2016 ESC handbook. So, it looks like this is all up to date, but I don't know if that's in compliance with what you just read. So hopefully it is, but it looks like they're trying to follow, um, the ESC handbook.
There's two revisions of the EP's ESC handbook. One was in two, the first, the original was in 2003, and then they did a revision in 2016.
You took this right out of their manual, right?
Um, it's not direct verbiage, but it's based on their guidelines.
Thoughts, Heidi?
Um, explaining this is the most up-to-date language, I'd be fine with it. Um, I think it's just a matter, I mean, I'm not voting, I'm just raising the question as well.
It's all right.
Um, I'm just trying to make sure that this is aligned with what you just read. It seems like it is, but I just don't know.
Seems to me that it is, too. Draw, thoughts?
Nope, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured by the way, it was saying this is...
So, you made a motion, I second it. Okay, we're gonna vote on it.
One.
Two. Okay. Okay, what are they gonna write down? See page four?
Sorry?
Okay, we need to put something for findings of facts.
Yes, so the, um, plan includes on page four a description about the plan, the, our project will need G and H on page four.
Okay, borrow pits. I make a motion that borrow pits is not applicable.
I'll second that motion.
Remove the segment, borrow pits is not applicable. Site conditions.
My vote?
J, site conditions. During construction, the site shall be maintained and left each day in a safe and sanitary manner, and any condition which could lead to personal injury or property damage shall be immediately corrected by the developer on order of the code enforcement officer or other authorized personnel. The developer shall make provision for disposal of oil and grease from equipment, and the area shall be treated to control dust from construction activities. Two, developed areas shall be cleared of all stumps, litter, brush, rubbish, brush, weeds, dead and dying trees, roots and debris, excess or scrap building materials shall be removed or destroyed immediately on the request of and at the satisfaction of code enforcement officer. No change in, three, no change shall be made in the elevation or contour of any lot or site other than shown on the final plan. This includes removal or addition of earth to or from another lot or site. Minimal changes in elevations or contours necessary necessitated by field conditions may be made as long as the change does not substantially or negatively impact the site.
This is...
What?
This is a C E O issue.
The C E O issue.
When they're doing it.
So, you're passing it off to them?
Uh, yeah, we've done that in the past because you can't, as far as the plan's concerned, it complies. But obviously, we can't prove they did it until they do it.
Well, we can't say that it's not applicable.
I think...
And we can't say that it doesn't comply.
It complies, the plan complies, but C E O, but...
So, I have a question. So, the plan's grounded, and so basically, I've got to use the plan for the existing detail of the land, and then I'm going to send people to cut out big massive trenches and trails and...
Yeah, I think they're...
It's not really, it's not really defined on the site plan that you're not doing that.
Yeah, there, there are certain types of trails that will require some excavation, but not on the level where you'd see them like a revolution thing of that kind of sort.
I think the plan complies.
The plan complies. Okay. And why?
Uh, because the plan doesn't show any violations of, um, major excavation or elevation changes. Or, I can't, I can't say that script that during construction, you can't do that. It's based on C E O issue.
I think the, um, that's why I included the, the, the Chapter 500 housekeeping standards. It kind of addresses a lot of this stuff, is not leaving trash around, not leaving open excavations, um, making sure that oil and grease or properties won't go and things like that. General kind of sacred sanitary housekeeping instructions.
I'll make a motion, the plan complies.
I'll second it. They vote on it?
One.
Two. Yeah, that one's done. I make this motion that K, plumbing, is not applicable. I make a motion that L, water supply, is not applicable. And M, utilities, is not applicable.
Second all those motions.
Sounds good to you? Okay. Uh, one, two, three, okay. One, two, three. Sign standards. Peter, any signs on this project?
Um, not, no, not any signs that would fall under the purview of the sign ordinance, which definitely applies to signs that are in public places where I can see them.
Okay, so, N, sign standards is not applicable. You're not gonna like these things?
No.
You like it? Make a motion that, oh, lighting is not applicable. I make a motion that P, dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, and explosive materials is not applicable. Um... How about one, two, three for that?
Yes, second.
Yes, okay. I make a motion that N, O, and P are not applicable.
Second.
One, two, three. Okay, next page. Reserve. I make a motion that Q, reserve is not applicable. And I'm actually, there's some reserves, but there's nothing there. Refuse disposal. Construction and demolition debris disposal shall be paid for by the owner applicant through the use of a roll-off or private disposal company. This is a very minimum project. There's not gonna be anything taken down.
So, I think that the purpose of this section is to make sure that the applicant's not planning to dispose the construction debris at the transfer station, um, we...
But you're not gonna have any building debris to start with, right?
Yeah, I think it'll be pretty minimal, and we have a lease on a yard roll-off container that we contract with Casella, and that would be used for this waste, for any, any waste that's generated from the project.
So, I should read this into the minutes just because, and... Okay, R, refuse disposal. Construction and demolition debris disposal shall be paid for by the owner applicant through the use of a roll-off and private disposal company. If, in the future, the town establishes a way to access a E for the town's waste disposal system, then disposal through the town may become an option. The applicant shall provide for the disposal of all hazardous solid and liquid waste on a timely basis in an environmentally safe manner. The planning board shall consider the impact of a particular industrial or chemical waste or byproducts upon the town's waste disposal system in terms of volume, flammability, or toxicity, and may require the applicant to dispose of such waste elsewhere in conformance with all applicable state and federal regulations. The planning board may require the applicant to specify the amount and exact nature of all industrial or chemical hazard waste to be generated by the proposed operation. I make a motion that R, waste disposal is not applicable.
Uh, I'll actually, could we make it a compliance? Because if you look at Section 10-2, number 21, it has their solid waste disposal.
From that one again, 10-2, what?
Uh, the, there's an attachment to answering question 21. I didn't remember pointing that out.
Let's see.
Exactly what you just said. I think it's there, so it's in compliance.
Ah. Okay.
There's an verbiage couple of sheets beyond, hang on, two.
Okay, Peter.
I'll show you.
Okay.
I haven't read yet.
Okay.
So, they list up that they're gonna use their own dumpster.
Okay. So, I'll take back my thoughts. It complies. And it complies because of, let me see. It's 10.2, item 21.
I'll make a motion that, uh, R, the project complies with R.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
One.
We'll vote on it.
One.
Two. And it complies, and it's covered under... Okay. Section of significant fisheries and wildlife habitat. Applicants proposing to develop land in or within seventy-five feet of fish or wildlife resource identified, resources identified and nearing comprehensive plan or by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife shall consult with a recognized wildlife or fisheries consultant or the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife and provide written comments to the planning board. Planning board shall consult with the Maine Department of Environmental, Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and may impose or any recommendations by the Maine Department or consult as conditions of approval. There are no major streams in this project. The chunks of forest land are broken and isolated. I don't believe that there are any significant fisheries or wildlife habitat in this project. But, that's my own opinion. It's not worth much. Um, thoughts, boys, girls?
Not fisheries, wildlife habitat, I don't know.
Okay.
Did you, I didn't, I don't know about the map that's in the comprehensive plan, whether or not this overlays. Do you know?
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything in the comprehensive plan, and then we have, um, various I F W requests that have gone in for other site law projects over the years, and so we have a pretty good idea of where I F W's protected wildlife habitat is on the mountain, and most of it's kind of on the western end of the resort.
So, the question is, does it comply, does it not comply, or is it not applicable?
I believe it's not applicable, but...
So, if I could direct your attention to one other thing, part of the phasing plan involves, prior to any new trail construction, we would walk the proposed trail of the code enforcement officer. She would have an opportunity to direct us to hire a consultant to review any areas if she saw as problematic. Um, and our selection of a consultant would go to her for approval before we contract with somebody. So, that was, I guess, our attempts to make sure that this is met, but not met, that this would be met on a case-by-case basis as we proceed through the various phases.
Okay. Thoughts, Rob?
Yes, I mean, I think that's adequate, um, and in the comprehensive plan, I believe, anything that's identified so far were not near. Yes, so I think that, I, I would suggest that the plan for each section to identify any issues is adequate, in compliance with the section.
Okay, so, it complies, is what you're saying?
I would say it complies, yes, the plan complies.
And what are we gonna put down for part of that?
That there is, um, the applicant will be doing an analysis for every phase.
Supposed to have already been done. Um... How about there are no, there are no major waterways within this project?
Yes, as far as I know, there's no
There...
Identified wildlife resources.
The...
Well, it's a habitat though.
Habitat.
I'm not so sure that you can really say that, when it's a forest, really.
I think, so I think they're looking at like, um, maps.
Yes.
Significant wildlife habitats with I F W, and the nearest one that I'm aware of is the kind of spruce crumbles at the top of, uh, Jordan, Oz, Aurora, Spruce Peak. Kind of twenty, twenty-seven hundred feet and up is considered endangered bird habitat. I don't, we don't have any like deer wintering areas or, um, anything like that in the forests. They'd like to sit in this forest in the resort that I know of. They'd like to sit in those forests in the resort that I know of.
Okay, scenic areas.
So were you guys gonna make...
Would you say do?
Were you gonna make a motion on that one?
Oh, did I didn't, I didn't complete the yellow one yet. Oh, okay, um... S. Protection of significant fisheries and wildlife habitat, I have written down. There is no wildlife habitat and more streams within this project. The forest cover is broken into small parcels and unsuitable as wildlife habitat. Um, that is what I've written in slightly of fact. Granted, these are my own opinions, but... I think that's okay. Thoughts?
I'd also like that, um, what I agree about the comprehensive plan, there is no identified wildlife resources or habitat in this.
That would probably be better, yeah.
Okay. So did I make a motion, did anyone make a motion?
No.
Okay, where did you find there's no identified habitat?
What came in the comprehensive plan?
Through the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Uh, I have reached my body, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion, yeah. S, protection of significant wild fisheries and wildlife habitat is covered, is implied.
Uh, we made it not applicable because it's saying if the applicant's proposing to develop, it's not applicable now.
So you all have that problem?
Yes. Applicant's proposing to develop land in or within seventy-five feet of fish or wildlife resources habitat.
Okay. One, two, done. Scenic locations, where are they? The planning board shall consider the existence of scenic site or view location as identified in the new comprehensive plan and the impact of proposed development on such a site or view. The planning board may require the placement of placement or additional qualities of structures on lots in such locations as to minimize a negative effect of the development on sites and views. I make a motion that T is not applicable.
I'll second that motion.
One, two. Two. I make a motion that U, archaeological sites, is not applicable.
I'll second that.
One, two. I make a motion that historic locations is not applicable.
I'll second that.
One, two. One, two, two. Uh, I make a motion that agricultural protection buffers drips is not applicable.
I'll second that.
One, two. I make a motion that X vehicular and pedestrian traffic is not applicable.
I'll second that.
One, two. Um, groundwater protection. I make a motion that groundwater protection is not applicable.
I will second that.
One, two. Uh, let's see. Noise. These are bicycles. I don't believe there's a whole lot of noise involved. Yes?
It says facilities anyway. Or, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that... Oh, what?
I said, do you wanna just group a whole bunch together?
Well... We'll work on that later. Z, make a motion, Z, noise is not applicable. Um... I make a motion that double A, buffers and screening standards. A B, home occupations. A C, light and fire suppression. A D, commercial wind energy facilities. A E, mineral exploration and extraction. A F, wireless telecommunications facilities. A G, solar energy systems. Uh, A H, recreational lodging facilities. All the above are not applicable.
I'll second that motion.
One, two. Two, he says. Okay. Ah, here we go. Okay, we're done. Performance. Standards. Let's do criteria for approval. Okay, Becky, where is it? Criteria for approval, twenty-one. Thank you. There were all these check off sheets ten years ago.
Well, I'm gonna just gonna take a quick break.
Yeah. Somehow I locked up my keyboard.
Did you say?
Locked up my keyboard.
I make a motion that A, B, A, pollution, B, erosion, C, traffic, D, sewage disposal, E, municipal solid waste disposal, and F, aesthetic and cultural, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values are not applicable.
Uh...
Erosion?
Erosion.
Erosion.
That's what I was gonna react to.
Yeah, I knew so.
Do you think erosion's applicable?
Uh, it's applicable, but in compliance, is my comment.
It's applicable, but it's what?
In compliance.
In compliance.
The proposed development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in land's capacity to hold water.
I think you're right. So... About, I modify a thought. A, pollution is not applicable.
Sure, I'm second that.
Okay. Does not apply. Oops. So erosion is in compliance.
We should vote on A.
Hmm?
We should vote on A.
We should vote on A. Okay, I make a motion that A, pollution, does not apply.
Second. One.
Two. What's that? Uh, B, erosion, is in compliance.
Second.
One.
Two.
Okay. And what are we gonna write down? They have an erosion control plan.
Yes.
Okay, traffic.
Did you guys vote on erosion?
Oh, we have to vote on B? Okay. I thought we did that. I make a motion that B, erosion, is in compliance.
Second.
One, two. Two, okay. Traffic, C. I make a motion that C is, does not apply. I make a motion that D, sewage disposal, does not apply. I make a motion that E, municipal solid waste, does not apply. Uh, I make a motion that F, aesthetic and cultural and natural values, does not apply.
I will second for this.
It's been moved and seconded that C, D, E, and F do not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Uh, traffic. Okay, we, G, financial and technical capacity. The applicant has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of his ordinance. Um...
Make a motion that the applicant definitely has adequate financial capacity.
Well, I was gonna say the applicant is, is an engineer, that ought to do it. And we have a letter from his higher-ups that say they can afford it.
From a financial institution, I believe.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion that G is applicable, applies. Is in compliance.
Second.
Okay, which one? Is in compliance?
It's both applies and is in compliance.
Okay. And then you seconded it, and we're gonna vote on it?
One.
Two. Sufficient water. Um, H. The proposed development has sufficient water available for its reasonably foreseeable needs. I make a motion that H, sufficient water, I, public water supply, J, surface waters, K, groundwater, L, flood areas does not apply.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. H, I, J, K, and L do not apply. All those in paper?
One.
Two.
I just wanted to note the time because we're coming up on two and a half hour mark. So I would like to vote for making motion to second the meeting.
Oh, let's see. It is coming up on eight thirty. It is our, it is our, um, time to go home. We can extend it by half an hour if we should so desire. Thoughts?
Since you need to make some changes anyway before we can sign, do we wanna do it next time? Or do we wanna finish up? Do you care?
Um, I think it depends on what the board perceives the schedule to look like on the twentieth. I don't know, I think there's a informal conference with a different application. My, my thought was we're pretty close to the end of the criteria for approval. I'd love to try to get those done if we can and then...
With any luck, we can get through the criteria of approval and which gets us down to approving, approving of conditions or denying your application. And I think we'll probably be right there. I... Okay, and then you can come back with your checks. And we can sign things.
Yeah, my hope is that if we just push through for hopefully another fifteen minutes, then we could...
Your hope is we push through?
My hope is if we could extend for a few more minutes, then my involvement in the next meeting would be minimal and the conference with the other applicant could be left free for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. We'll get through this as fast as we can.
Motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we extend the meeting by thirty minutes. All those in paper?
One.
Two. Okay, uh, where was I? L.
Seven, scratch.
There's only a dozen more. Several of them are not applicable, so...
Yeah, I was looking through and it looked like several of them were not applicable, so in my, in my mind, I would just like to wrap it up and then come back with the revised application and the approval sheet to sign.
And the money. Mostly the money. Mostly the money.
Realizing that I pushed too long on key. It locks up my whole keyboard. Run that back.
Point of interest is we're getting close to the end here.
My keyboard on my PC at work has some weird switches, it'll all of a sudden look out and all the like caps lock and unlock. All those lights will go on.
But they normally...
And the keyboard will beep if I'm typing keyboard habits, it'll hold that key down for like thirty seconds. It'll do like ten thousand Z's in a row.
Well, so, I used to have that problem with having something tied across my screen. And then, do you continue that? Because I had like one screen and I just had my laptop open. And that's how I did my two screens. And of course I called IT. I thought something was going on with my computer. And I'm like, you know, something's happening in T P. And pointing out that I had stacks and stacks of paper on my laptop. Pushing down. I was like, oh. So he gave me a second screen and I keep my laptop closed.
Yeah, two screens is a game changer.
What's that?
Two screens and the game changer.
Oh, it's something, yes.
My dad was a day trader. He'd go in his office, he had like six screens up and his eyes would be like crossed. Dad, can we play video games all day? You're like, whatever you want, just go away.
And I've watched a few people do coding and stuff. I just don't like, not much.
I interned doing coding in college.
What's that?
I interned doing computer programming coding in college. Wasn't for me.
I, I took a three-hour G code class, which is the language for programming, like automated manufacturing equipment. And it was from like noon to three on like Wednesday afternoons. I'm like, possible, stay awake.
We're back?
We're back.
Okay. Uh, let's see. We are at M, freshwater wetlands. I make a motion that freshwater wetlands applies. Oh, I should read it first. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed development have been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application, regardless of size of the wetlands. Any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation district. I make a motion that it applies because the freshwater wetlands have been identified on the plans. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that freshwater wetlands applies and has been identified on the plans. One, two. Okay. River streams and brooks. Any river stream or brook within the body, within or but in the proposed development has been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application. I make a motion that this applies because it's been, and it has been identified.
Oh, second.
Okay.
One, two, please.
One, two.
I'm sorry.
One.
Two. Okay, um... Stormwater. Oh, the proposed development will abide for adequate stormwater management. I make a motion that that applies and is in compliance because it's page four.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, oh, stormwater. Likewise, and is, and is in compliance. One, two. Okay. Spaghetti lots prohibited. I make a motion that P, spaghetti lots, is not... Does not apply.
I'll second that.
Let's vote on it. One, two. Okay. Does not apply. Municipal services. The proposed development will not place unreasonable burden on the town's municipal services, including but not limited to the fire department and/or local school systems. I make a motion that...
Do you wanna group some together again? Do you wanna group some together again?
Um... Yes, I would like to make a motion that that does not apply. I make a motion that R, Lake Foster's concentration, does not apply. I make a motion that S, impact on joint municipalities, does not apply. I make a motion that T, land subject to ripper nation harvesting, does not apply.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, although on...
One.
Two. Okay, it's been moved and applied, it does not apply. Oops. Conformity to local ordinances and plans. The proposed development conforms to a duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan or development plan or land use plan, if any. In making this determination, the planning board may interpret these ordinances and plans. Um... This is in the resort district. I believe this is allowed. So, I will make a motion that U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, applies.
Second.
Second. Okay. We will vote on it.
One.
Two. And what shall we write down? It's in the resort district.
Yes, there's no... No barrier to...
My handwriting is not improving. Okay, we have done criteria for approval. The next checkmark on this review tracking paperwork is the board moves with formal motion to approve, approve of conditions or deny the application. I make a motion that the board approves application number twenty-five dash two eighty-eight self-ranch bicycle trails.
Please remind me what, when I say approve of conditions, can the condition be safety?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. So, you can, you can discuss, you can apply conditions of approval, um, to, to things that come in with the, um, with the application fee, like with the application fee and with, and with the application and, and, you want to discuss, you want to discuss the errors of the document?
Yeah, so the two typos, uh, ten, ten four, form ten point four, two C is a typo. The word fire chief, instead of change the word sheriff. Ten point four, number seven, uh, we give you a reference of correct drawing sheet, which is not sheet two, it's sheet four. And then the other thing that was up for discussion was the, um, errors in the list of the butters. And so what we're gonna clarify is the expectation that we fix the list of the butters and send out a butter notice to anyone who has missed the original list. Um, or is the expectation that we, uh, find out what things are and moving forward, that the double checking is also a little more costly?
I will withdraw my motion. I will now make a motion that we approve with conditions, that Peter has just noted. And Becky has just noted, I'm gonna sign.
Peter, you left a question there about...
That was a question.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if that was put to bed or if that was concretely a condition.
My understanding is maybe to fix that for the current laws, right?
So that's...
Quite tight, so I think that should be...
What we find is that we use the, the list that provides, um, to, to say?
Yeah, which is what the ER says to you.
So it's, so the, the conditions of approval will be, um, paying the fee, correct fees, and then fixing the two typos.
Yep. Thoughts?
I'm good with the mystery, something else, um, for practice.
I'm gonna say in line here.
Uh, see, I made the motion, right?
Um, we moved through, so let's, let me make the motion to approve of the condition. The P P K typo that you said is in the application, we submit appropriate...
Okay, I made the motion, but...
He doesn't mean it.
He was made, I'll second it. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Yep, we'll come back with a, with a revised application, um, on the point. Thank you for extending the meeting and letting us review without having to pay, appreciate that.
The record show that the chair is reviewing the board.
Thank you, Gooch, for filling in for me.
You're the chair for this one.
Oh, I, yeah, okay, sorry.
I can't, I think... Thank you, Peter. All right, uh, the post enforcement officer had a family emergency that she had to leave for, so therefore we will not have any reports to pass. Where's my agenda? Uh, we have no findings of fact. I will limit open discussions to be very quick. In front of you, you have, uh, two packets. One of them starts off with a letter that I am sent, sent, or memo from me to the board. Please change the date and the subject line from six twenty twenty-five to eight twenty twenty-five.
I was wondering about that.
This letter is asked, saying, stating that we will be discussing the Board of Appeals' notice of decision and findings of fact and conclusions of law dated seven thirty twenty-five at our next meeting. And it is highly requested and advised that we all get very familiar with the four cited documents in the memo.
Are there any questions? And, and that's attached to the memo?
No, no. They are not attached to, what follows in the memo is other stuff.
Okay.
You need the Board of Appeals' notice of decision, findings of fact, and conclusions of law dated seven thirty twenty-five. You need a copy of the Town of Newry Appeal Ordinance. A copy of the Unified Development Review Ordinance, specifically chapter, section seven, appeals. And B, the Maine Municipal Association Manual for Local Planning Boards, chapter three, appeals. All of those will be in great assistance in being able to digest the Board of Appeals' decision. Any questions?
Is B on the town address?
Yes, B is on the town, is on the website. It is, it is dot matrix, dates back to nineteen ninety-two. It is on the website. Any other questions? Okay. Following that, the first page, you have a bunch of what I will call Cliff Notes, which are tidbits that I have pulled away from our recent meetings. And they are for, uh, your enjoyment to read and review. And, uh, again, you can discuss those at the next meeting if there is any discussion points. The last item is a separate packet.
Where did these things come from?
Uh, from me.
Like you wrote all these or these...
I did.
Okay. A Cliff Notes.
Well, I'm, they're Ted notes.
Got it. But then, are they reconciling certain documents?
Uh, if they are, they're in there, but not, they're, they're not to that degree of formality. They are observations that I have made in my digging around and doing research. They are, it's not a formal document, they're not intended for, uh, it's more for education and training purposes for the board. Finally, you have in front of you a, uh, a packet of multiple pages called Rules of Procedure. This is, uh, I am proposing that we replace our bylaws with these rules of procedures. And I would like to discuss them in detail over the next several meetings. So please review them, make notes, bring your questions, edits, comments, et cetera. And again, that will be, uh, for the business for the next meeting. We have one new business item, that is the Board of Appeals', uh, decision, findings of fact, and conclusions of law on application twenty-five two eighty-six, plus, uh, the Ted notes, the discussion Ted notes and the rules of procedure.
So, you just said this document, rules of procedure, is, you're proposing that it replaces the bylaws?
That is correct. Now, now, Joel made copies of the bylaws and the planning board ordinance just to make sure that everybody's notebook was up to date.
And the reason for this change is because of...
I believe that the bylaws, for example, our bylaws do not discuss the topic of reconsideration. Uh, and there are several other items which I, I think our bylaws fall short.
Understood, I just want to take it...
Also, as an enclosure, enclosure one to this is a modified rules of order. I don't know about you, but I have not read Robert's Rules of Order, all seven hundred pages of it. Uh, nor do I intend to. And to say that we're gonna abide by Robert's Rules of Order when nobody reads them is not correct. So, I have, I have divi, come up with a modified rules of order, which is self-explanatory. And I hope that people read it and ask questions, make comments. After all, we all have to work with, with those rules of order, as well as the rules of procedure for that matter. Questions?
Is this, uh, rules of procedure gonna bring us up to the twenty-first century?
Well, seeing that the last rules of procedure have, uh, were from the previous century, that would be an affirmative.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I should restate that, the original bylaws were, were approved back in the nineteen nineties. So, they have, we have edited the bylaws since then, but not a lot of times... So they have, we have edited the bylaws since then, but not a lot of times. We've edited the U D R O far more often. Other questions, comments, clarifications? Meredith?
I'll review or ask more questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is, are there, is this like based on the original and then you, is there a way to highlight changes that you made from the original or this is just a whole new rewrite?
It's a whole new rewrite. There is very little, there's very little in there, perhaps there's some paraphrasing from existing things in the by, in the, in the bylaws. But for instance, I already said that reconsideration is, is not in the bylaws. Remote meeting policy, which the board adapted on a separate sheet of paper, which I think we probably all have the laws, is now in the procedure, rules of procedure. It is, it is, I'm asking the board to try to tighten up and to make our, our rules of how we conduct business a little more, uh, complete. And it's a, it's a board, you know, if, if the decision of the board is not to, not to go ahead with it.
But just to clarify Heidi's point, this was, we never had rules of procedure before we had bylaws.
We had, we had bylaws, which are, I thought we could go into semantics, is there a difference between one and another?
So this is a new document replacing the bylaws?
Yeah, replacement of the bylaws, we can call this.
The bylaws.
The bylaws, but it's, um, the, one, since you're there, one idiosyncrasy, because there is some reference in the main statutes towards the board having rules of procedures. It does not talk about boards having bylaws. And the, because the, and actually our bylaws as well, task members outside of the planning board, such as the code enforcement officer, the recording secretary. The, it needs to be approved not by this board, but by the select board. So the proposed rules of procedure, should the board decide to go ahead with them as amended, edited, rewritten, will eventually get passed on to the select board for their approval.
Oh, okay, so if, if we decide we want this thing to decide what can happen?
Yes, yes, we get to go with our, you know, more porridge foods.
I have one more question.
One more question, all right?
So like with when we made amendments to the U D R O, is that something the town attorney would look at as well?
The, the U D R O is an ordinance, uh, and a complicated ordinance. And also because it has zoning or districting in it, yet that would be an automatic review by the town attorney. This rule of procedures, we certainly can ask the town administrator, they will pay for lawyer time to read it. But it's up for us to decide whether or not we think the, we need a legal, legalese put in there.
I don't believe the bylaws were just anything that the attorney.
No, I don't think the bylaws were anything the attorney, and I don't think there's any requirement statute wise that it has legal review.
And I almost think in the past that the board could change the board's bylaws. It couldn't change the planning board ordinance without the select board.
And, or an actual, or town meeting perhaps too.
Yeah.
The bylaws is an internal document on how, or in this case, the rules of procedures is an internal document. But because the internal document gives tasking to people who are not on the planning board, the code enforcement officer, the town administrator, it is, it's proper to go to the select board. Yes, ma'am?
Um, did you, when you put this document together, did you research other towns in Maine that have best practices or rules of procedure to follow, maybe their guidance to see how they've written it up?
Uh, I did. The town of Bethel.
So is this a mirror copy of Bethel?
It is not, no way, Jose.
So you haven't gone beyond Bethel though, it's not based on?
I would hope that the board, in our diligent review of this document, will do such research and, and do that. I have, I have, uh, let me, I've done some research, primarily looking at what's in our bylaws and what is in the, uh, Bethels. And also what is in the Main Municipal Association Manual for Planning Boards and Board of Appeals in how to conduct business. But I certainly, you know, if you want to go see what Pear Bassett Valley has, I would certainly encourage for somebody to take the time to do that. That would probably be the closest comparison. Yes, it'd be, you know, you could go down and do see what the town of Wells does, but that's, that's, it's an ostrich egg to a Hummingbird egg, you know? But yeah, Pear Bassett Valley, Rangeley would also be another, another, Pear Bassett Valley is probably the best because it's another ski town. You could have, you could go out of state too if you wanted to, you could go, you could hit the, Lincoln or Henshaw or something. I don't know if the Henshaw law is a good idea. Okay, any other questions? Thank you all for your, your comments. Rob, you looked like you were about to say something?
Yeah, this is unrelated, can we get something not, it's not needed, on the list, probably for a number of meetings ahead? I noticed per section thirteen review, somebody said, I'm wondering if we could re-identify for the future, like knowing where and where we are in the historical location, having it. And then when we're looking at the plan, we've already got the roads, so it's not that, therefore it's not applicable.
That would be, uh.
Our archaeological sites.
That was weird. I, that's an excellent idea, I walk, excellent suggestion.
This is also not, not a discussion, it's also on the list for some.
How, let me play devil's advocate, and we've got two minutes to get out of here. Burden of proof is on the applicant. The burden of proof is on the applicant. The criteria of approval, in all twenty one of them, the burden of proof is on the applicant and the evidence has to be in the application.
So we don't want to have, like, we can just talk on your agenda for some.
We can have it, but, but my point is, is that as the board, as we review and we come up with findings of fact, it all should be in the application. We should not be going out and adding in our own findings of fact that we derived from somewhere else that was not submitted by the applicant.
So are you on a point of order of that, like, we didn't have the historical map today and they didn't have it either, but we voted to not include it?
I'm not.
We, I, well, I'm saying that this board voted to not include it when in fact the applicant did not have.
That's, you have a very good point. You have a very good point. The, and we, I will make a motion that we extend the meeting for another thirty minutes so that we can answer this question. May I have a second?
All second.
A motion's been made to extend the meeting for another thirty minutes with a proper second. All those in favor?
One, two.
All right, uh, we will get out of here before nine thirty over. The, the Heidi, the, the, the thing that we as a citizen board have to struggle with is we need to create a legal document that stands up to scrutiny from the legal profession. If, should there be an agreed party that takes the, the application to appeal? Uh, if, as historically, there have been no agreed parties, and therefore the quality of the review has not come into question.
Guess my only point would be that if another applicant came in after this one, and they didn't have the archaeological map, and we pointed that out to them, and then we gave them a different answer than we gave this applicant, then we wouldn't be consistent in our.
May not be consistent, but there is no precedence, or the idea of precedence does not exist in a planning board review. Each review is independent and is a review of the application submitted against the ordinance. And previous approved or disapproved or denied applications by the board have no relevancy in the review that's being undertaken. That's, and that's, that's been, that's in, in court decisions from the state, et cetera, so.
I'm just saying as a board in the future, we should.
I hear what you're saying. Consistency, consistency is, would be ideal. But in order to reach that consistency, we need to come in with having done our homework. And I, I'm sorry, but you can't draft findings of fact and conclusions of law on the fly. And come out with a quality product. We are all encumbered with the obligation to spend the time necessary to review the application, draw from it the findings of fact that support or do not support the ordinance. That's what we took a note for. We, we don't have the liberty of being subjected and saying, oh, that's ridiculous, that's, that's, I don't, you know, that's.
I don't think I'm saying that at all. I'm saying that when you vote on your findings of fact, if you don't have something that you think that you should have, then you should not, you should say that you don't have it. I'm not saying that we have to say that.
Okay, yeah.
You, the, if somebody didn't supply something, and then we see that it's not there, and then we say, oh, it's not applicable or whatever, that's not really true, right? Like, we didn't get it from them, so I don't understand how you can vote on like, if something that's missing.
I probably agree with you. Probably agree with you.
So in, I'm just saying, as a board in the future, we would have to be really diligent to make sure that the application is completely.
Whether, whether a criteria of approval is deemed to be not applicable, deemed to be in compliance, or deemed to not be in compliance, has to be substantiated by a finding of fact that is in the application. And one of the Ted notes that you have there talks about what happens when the evidence is not there. And the board has every right to, to find a criteria approval does not meet, is not in compliance, because the applicant did not submit sufficient evidence to allow the board to come to that decision.
What's the burden on the board to, when the applicant says, hey, there's no wildlife within, they just say in the application it's not applicable, right? Because they got a checkbox for that.
Right.
Do we need to, because that's my question, do we need to say finding of fact, the applicant says it's not applicable, so therefore it's not applicable?
The, the correct one there would be either, either you find it applicable and you're comfortable saying that the evidence has been provided. Or you say the, the application is not, has not submitted sufficient evidence to allow to show compliance with this criteria. At least that's my, you know, I know I'm being a little forceful here, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'm getting worried, we're getting into a negative situation where the applicant has to prove something negative, which is pretty hard, because if they say there's no archaeological sites.
If they can reference, you know, if they can.
So what you're talking about right now isn't really a criteria for approval, it's one of the performance.
Performance standards.
Yes, I'm not really talking about criteria.
And there's like, yeah, and there's a bunch of performance standards that don't apply, um, you know, like cellphone towers and stuff, it's, it's kind of obvious, you know? But the wildlife thing, um, you know, I don't know, some applicants have submitted a letter from the I N W.
Yes.
And that would be your, your findings of fact.
Absolutely, but if we, if we want that kind of level, we should probably put it in the application, you need to.
That's, that's where completeness comes in. So the first, the first step in an application is, has the applicant submitted sufficient evidence so that the board can make a review against the ordinance? And we have thirty days from the time the application comes in to find an application complete or incomplete. It's all obligation to come back and say, you, you know, it's not to say that the, that this information submitted is correct, it's simply that they have provided sufficient evidence for the board to make a, a review of that.
So even a not applicable checkbox really needs to be some, something backing that up, that more than.
Whether you, you say something is applicable, or applicable in compliance, applicable not in compliance, or not applicable, every one of the three of those needs to have a finding of fact to support it. Every motion that is made, especially when we're doing criteria of approval, needs to be supported by findings of fact that are in the application.
Okay, so that's the key thing, is it has to be in the application?
It has to be in the application.
There's no external information.
No external information. Now, the board can, in the process of the review, submit evidence. The evidence doesn't have to come strictly from the applicant.
Well, that's where I'm going, because for the performance standard, one of the things to be useful is to be able to say, if we know what the archaeological sites are in Newry, and they say it isn't one of them.
That, that, that is.
Everyone should get a letter.
And.
I mean, that's a lot.
I. You, then who's going to put that, who, who, what knowledgeable, credible, uh, certified entity is going to be able to put that list together?
Well, if it says, as in, it's listed in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
If you have a comprehensive plan, we can pump through it every time, or we can.
Yeah, or the, or the applicant. Yeah, or the, or the applicant can sit there and say, oh, you, you know, by your comprehensive plan, we, this site does not have any, does not cringe or anything.
I, I think we need a little more clarity for applicants to look at, to do here.
I, I, I'm all for that. Let's do it.
I have a question, because like when you go through with the performance standards, there's a few of them, and I can't remember which ones off the top of my head, but that, when Joel is here and when you guys are reviewing them, you'll mention that it's actually an assessment thing, it's not a planning.
We're, we're getting, we're getting off, we're straying a bit, but that's a good question. The.
My question is, should those types of things be pulled out of the U D R O and put into her ordinance, or what are she does?
That's a tough one. That's, that's a tough one. I don't know what, uh, you, I don't know, that's a complicated one to look at.
Yeah, because it's like, are we responsible for there, she is, and it's.
The, the U, chapters six of the U D R O tasked the code enforcement officer with enforcement of the ordinance. There are many items, as Becky has stated, performance standards and elsewhere, that are enforcement-related. For instance, in a phase development, prior to the commencement of the next phase, the applicant has to meet the current standards for fire suppression and life safety. So if you had a applicant, a subdivision that was approved prior to 19, 2019, and the applicant, the approved application was a phase development, and each development called for a 40,000 gallon system for fire suppression, and now phase number X is starting in 2025, the app, that phase would have to not meet the standard of, whenever that application was approved, but the standard of the U D R O in 2025, which is a 60,000 gallon system. And that is, that is an enforcement action, it's, this is in chapter 3E of the, of the U D R O, that is an enforcement action that the CEO has to carry out. The planning board does not have enforcement action. We can't go to a, to a subdivider and say, oh, by the way, you're not in compliance because that needs to be a 60,000 gallon system and not a 40,000 gallon system.
The planning board has no enforcement authority.
Exactly, the planning board has no enforcement authority. Now, if that applicant comes back for an amendment, one of the requirements in the criteria of approval, the last one, is, are they in compliance with the ordinance?
Somebody was, all current ones.
Well, the ordinance that was in effect at the time of approval, if, unless there is a provision somewhere else in the ordinance that says this latest, this latest change supersedes all prior approvals. And the only one that I know of that is like that is for life safety and fire suppression. But that's the only time, and then that, that's not an enforcement, it's strictly coming to a, finding a fact that the, the applicant is not in compliance with their approved plan, and therefore, we can't go forward and approve an amendment to a plan that's not in compliance. Makes sense? Anyway, I've gone way longer than I intended, and again, if I come over strong, I apologize. I am open, I am sensitive to that, I am open to people saying, hey, tone it down, et cetera, et cetera. I have no problems, I want this to be a collaborative board with efforts. I do have some strong opinions about evidence and whatnot, but, but I am also the chair. All right, any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion, that's not a question, that's a, that's a motion. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
A motion has been made with a proper second that we adjourn the Wednesday, August 6th, regularly scheduled meeting of the Newry Planning Board, and we will reconvene on the 20th. Are all those in favor?
One.
Great. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, people, for your time.